Good evening and welcome to the April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Longview City Council. Tonight, LaJuan Gordon, CEO of the Northeast Texas Habitat for Humanity, will lead tonight's prayer and pledge. Habitat for Humanity helps create safe, decent, and affordable housing for individuals living below area median income. The organization builds and sells simple, decent housing at cost with an affordable mortgage. They also repair health and safety hazards in homes of senior adults, military veterans, and persons living with disabilities. This fiscal year, Habitat has built two houses, has two ready-to-be in construction, has repaired ninety-seven homes. Thank you all, Habitat for Humanity. Please rise, Ms. LaJuan Gordon.
Let us pray. Our holiest of holies, you are known by so many names, and we invite your presence to abide here tonight. We ask your blessings on this gathering of people who have been called to lead our community where we live, work, and play. Remind us all, Lord, that the distinct privilege of leading and the sacred responsibility of being a servant to the common good of all. Let us not forget to respect and protect the least of those among us because they are so often overlooked and left voiceless. Grant them and us tonight the wisdom and courage to know and do what is right, good, and true. May thee and we speak out boldly when it's time to speak and listen respectfully and patiently when it's time to listen. We ask that this meeting be guided by the spirit of community, of justice, and love, and as we pray these things in your name, may it be so. Amen.
Amen.
Pay honor to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I do have a presentation tonight. This is a proclamation commemorating Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Day, April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Whereas the Women's Center of East Texas has requested that the mayor by proclamation recognize April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three as Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Day in the city of Longview. Sexual Assault Awareness Day calls attention to the fact that sexual assault is widespread and affects women, men, and children of all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds. With leadership and community support, we can be successful in the education and prevention of this abuse. So now therefore Andy Mack, the authority of SME as Mayor of Longview, proclaim April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three as Sexual Assault Awareness Prevention Day in Longview. I'd like to present this to Ms. Holly Bruce, CEO of the Women's Center of East Texas. Come on up, Holly. How are you today?
I think I present Holly with more proclamation than anything in the world because she does everything. This is so important to our community, not to our community, this is important to our country because this is a deal where we must become more and more aware in order to prevent things of this nature from happening. The horrific things that people undergo and suffer through, you all are there for them. And thank you so much. Without you all, where would they be and who would they turn to? So thank you for having a place and a turn, having someone to hold their hand and love them like you do, and just keep doing what you're doing. We need you so much. Y'all have the best. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, this is one of my favorite meetings of the year because we get to hear from our youth and to see what's going on in their minds and listen to what they've put together for their little essays for my mayor's scholarship. I want to thank Ms. Ishihara once again for donating her stipend to this fund. And I'm excited to hear each one of you come up and read your essays. So what I will do, I will call you up one at a time, come and read your essay, we'll take a picture, then we'll have the next one come up, and when we're all finished, we'll take a group picture with everybody there, okay? So let's start with Halsville, Tori Fushenberger.
Hi.
Hello.
Okay. Eighteen years ago, on February twenty-seventh, was the day I was born in a small town in West Virginia. It has many supermarkets, restaurants, and places to pick up fast food. It even has a historical district and cruising nights every third Saturday in the summer. There are loads of small businesses with very kind shopkeepers and churches on most corners. Within the walls of the city are unexplainable amounts of gossip and catty type people. It's ironic from what you'd normally hear about the people from there. Tales that are told of these places are always of sweet and kind-hearted people who would give you the shirt off of their back. These types of people do exist, but they're more of a rare breed in these times. The management has attempted to restore Princeton to its former glory, but they failed. A new mural didn't fix the problem of low-income families. The murals may have produced a type of temporary happiness, but the roots of the issues that the town faces are much deeper than a slight depression. As the jobs moved out, the drugs moved in, natural gas, oil, and coal companies all around found reasons to move north. The people feel insecure from the losses. The town has no sense of community or any sort of beauty. It only feels like a never-ending negative feedback loop. The only way to change is to escape to a healthier environment. I was lucky enough for a chance at a better life, and I landed here in Longview. When I moved to Longview nearly a year ago, my initial impression was how organized and upkept all the businesses and roads appeared. Previously, I was used to every town looking depressing, old, and rather drab. This new strange place was modern and upbeat in a sense. It was a newfound feeling. This town, although oddly flat, seemed alien. The streetlights along Loop Two Eighty-One stretched for as far as the eye could see. The simple car rides to the various businesses felt like they took an eternity. Over time, I learned to admire what I had. Never had I ever seen rows of grass and trees stretched out to divide the highway amid the huge metal poles that illuminated the streets. The parks across town stunned me with their sheer size. Every single place I have visited has been well-maintained, and that's honestly impressive to me. The comparison of the beautification of Longview to my hometown is drastic. The business area of our region is appealing. It seems as if there's limitless amounts of goods and services to perceive. The setup brings life into living. Since I'm well acquainted with my surroundings and peers, we always look forward to finding something to do. There is something for everyone regardless of the circumstances.
For those of y'all who aren't aware, we normally have a topic that the students have to write an essay on. And this year, I deviated from that, and I just told them they could write on whatever they wanted to, but they had to impress me. So you can see how this has already come off to a really good start. So thank you for your essay, Tori. Wonderful. Our next one is from Longview, Lillian Purdom.
Okay. I walked before I crawled. I flew a plane before I drove a car. My parents, peers, and teachers know how hard I strive for a goal until I reach it, even when I strive before my time. This is who I am, and I have learned to harness it as a strength. My name is Lillian Purdom, and I am a private pilot in East Texas. Five years ago, my eighth-grade class at Foster Middle School took a trip to the Frontiers of Flight Museum in Dallas. The trip opened my eyes to the possibility of a career as a professional pilot. I had never considered women in aviation until that trip, an instance in which a gift opened a pathway I hadn't previously seen. When I expressed interest in aviation, my parents researched instruction available here in Longview. I began taking flight lessons at the Gregg County Airport on a limited basis as my family could not afford it. My mother is a minister and my father a public school teacher. Nevertheless, my parents took some of the savings they had set aside for college in order to pay a local flight instructor so I could start right away. This was another gift that opened doors. We pecked at training for two years until another gift opened a new possibility. I received a flight training scholarship from AOPA, or the Aircraft Owner and Pilots Association, which I was able to use to finish my private pilot's license at Thrust Flight Training Academy in Addison, Texas, the summer before my senior year of high school. I could not have finished the checkride and obtained my license while still in high school without this scholarship. My next goal is to attend Laterno University and earn a degree in aviation. I wish to pursue both training as a pilot as well as the business of aviation management with the hopes of starting my own aviation management company one day. I have already made steps towards this end by applying and being accepted into Laterno's aviation department. I also want to stand on my own two feet. I know I must personally contribute financially to this long-term goal of mine. To this end, I applied for a job and was hired at KRS Jet Center at the Gregg County Airport, where I have been working before school hours and on weekends. Such, just as I pursued my private pilot's license during high school, I will pursue my degree in aviation. I had to peck at it for a while due to financial limitations. I would have continued this approach until I obtained the license. However, the scholarship freed me to move on more quickly. I believe the same is true in this case. Scholarships may open the door. I am grateful for leaders like Mayor Mack and Councilwoman Ishihara who wish to support local young people pursuing their dreams. Thank you for the opportunity to apply, and thank you for your consideration.
Next, we have Pine Tree, Van Tran.
Not everything that is faced can be changed, but nothing can be changed until it is faced. James Bolin. I lived up this code for three years straight now, and let me tell you the story of why I have been thinking this code is meaningful to me in every other way. I grew up in a small Southeast Asian country, Vietnam, where nearly half of the population had to struggle for a living with a wage of three dollars per hour. My parents, no exception, also had to struggle financially to support our family. I remember spending most of my childhood with my grandparents because my dad had to go offshore for work and my mom had to take extra shifts to provide us a decent living. Stamping to my memories were the images of my mom's health decline as a result of the endless night that she must stay up for work. Growing up by her side, I watched her take medications because she couldn't breathe due to the pollution in our hometown. Watching her suffer, I always wanted to help, yet I was powerless because I didn't have the required knowledge to do so. As a little girl, I had always dreamed of being a successful accountant, hoping that one day I could help my parents with our finances and provide us a better living. Twenty nineteen was a changing year of my life. My family received an opportunity to move across the world. America, a place that is twelve hours different from where we were, a country that is thirty times bigger than my hometown. During my first year in the U.S., I experienced a tremendous amount of culture shock. I was isolated and treated differently at school because my English was broken and because I grew up in a place where the majority couldn't even locate it on the map. Day by day, I became more depressed because I started losing myself. I didn't know what to do or who I was at that time. I feared being hurt. My young self tried her best to hide herself in her own world and cover up her feelings. While I was in the year of high school, I developed a passion for math and numbers. I remember spending my spare time during research about numbers, some tricks about math. As I became more interested in math, I eased my mind from the bad experience I had at school and no longer felt lonely or depressed. With this factor combined, I came to realize my choice to pursue a career in financial management. Now as a senior, preparing myself to go to college in less than three months. I am proud of myself for what I have accomplished for the past three years. Everyone somehow has the lowest point in their life, but the point is, are you ready to face it yet? And the way you will face it will make a big difference in your life. Future is brighter if you try your best in everything you do.
And as it would have it, when I pick these scholarship recipients, I don't know their names. I do it completely blind. I don't know the names of the recipients. I don't know if they're boys or girls. I don't know anything about them. And sometimes it's three girls and one boy, as it is this year. We never know. But our last one is Spring Hill, Shane Browder.
Sweating in the blistering heat of my dad's mechanic shop, I checked the stock market on my phone to realize that I made more money in the first hour of the trading day than I would make all week working. The summer after my sophomore year forced me to face challenges head-on and helped me find a career path that I love. My dad introduced me to finance by having me read The Intelligent Investor by Benjamin Graham. We began to discuss the ins and outs of the economy, and before I knew it, I was getting a front-row seat in the action I had been dying to participate in. My mom opened a custodial brokerage account using the two thousand dollars that I had earned that summer, and I began reading everything I could about how the stock market works. My eyes widened and my stomach dropped when I opened the trading application on my phone for the first time and realized how intricate and intimidating the stock market was. While staring at numbers dancing around my trading screen, all I could see was potential. As the summer went on, I had burst this success. Since we were in an expanding economy and interest rates were poised to go higher, I bet that the financial institution Goldman Sachs would trade higher. During the next three weeks, my idea had come to fruition, and my two thousand dollar investment had earned a profit that brought me to thirty-four hundred dollars. Trading had become a considerable part of my life, and I began to explore new market areas. As I scrolled through the charts of different financial products, I saw that I had enough money to hold a soybean future. Looking at a clear down trend, I bet that they would go lower, not knowing that there was an acreage report the following day. The next day, my trading account had been decimated. As the news came out, it had only taken five minutes for me to lose over twelve hundred dollars. As I stared at my phone, I remember angrily saying to my dad, "I wish I would have lost it all so I don't have to worry about trading ever again." Although it was a significant setback, it also forced me to evaluate where I'd gone wrong. I had recognized that I had been overconfident. For the next couple of months, I began to create a system for trading that aided in managing the emotional aspect of trading with my own money and the overall risk-to-reward ratio I would be participating in during a trade. From this point forward, I began to analyze, excuse me, I began to analyze both sides before taking a trade and found tremendous success. The fruit of my hard work had finally blossomed. Between February and October of two thousand and twenty-two, I had made hundreds of trades and acquired a total profit of sixty thousand dollars. Training during my high school career taught me that I could amount to anything as long as I have grit and draw lessons from the past.
So as you can all see, our future is very bright with our young people in this world that are being educated in all of our high schools. Congratulations to all the high schools and the instruction that they're giving to our young people because it's a reflection of where they go every day and what they get to do and experience. And it's great to hear their minds work and see what they've come through. So thank you all so much for participating, and I expect great things out of all four of you all. We'll keep in touch and we'll monitor your progress, okay? Thank you all. We're now to citizen comment. I have no speaker cards just for citizen comment. I have a few for zoning we'll reserve for the zoning portion of the meeting. We're now to public safety update. We will start with Chief Boone.
I'm a little humble to come up behind these young men and women, stockbrokers and mathematicians and pilots. First, I want to cover our statistics for March last month. Our priority one calls for service, our average was four minutes flat on our top calls there, so very glad to see that number. Calls for service throughout the month were five thousand eight hundred twenty-one with two thousand four hundred sixty-eight traffic stops. We had thirty-three DWI cases and two hundred and three crashes in our city. Moving on, we had a commissioning ceremony this past Monday for two new officers, definitely not me in the middle. We have Michael Luke on the left and Robert Lineiger on the right there. And they just graduated from the TJC Academy, and they will be starting field training here in the next couple of weeks, and we are very excited to have them. And talking about tenure, we had a tenure recognition on Tuesday, and that's all of our folks that showed up from the police department. Very good turnout. Run through them real quick. We had Detective Michelle Chitwood with five years of service and Officer Christina Payne with five years of service. SRO for Pine Tree, Glenn Dur with ten years of service, and a patrol officer and field training officer Benny Cooks with fifteen years of service. We have Sergeant Stephen Burt on our midnight patrol with fifteen years of service. Officer Mauro Vialla with fifteen years of service on patrol. And then we have Sergeant Nikki Williams on our day shift patrol with fifteen years, and Sergeant Ryan Gibson assigned to Criminal Investigations Division with fifteen years of service. And in the big two-oh numbers, we have Casey Lawson, one of our Public Safety Communications Supervisors with twenty years of service, and Lieutenant James Bettis with twenty years of service. So definitely proud of all those folks and enjoy it when we have retention and have people wing celebrate with that many years of service. Recent events we attended, we had Strut Your Mutt. And Officer Reynolds down there on the bottom left, I don't know if he ended up getting adopted or it adopted him, but we were trying to do a little recruiting out there. I think he ended up, must have been playing with the dogs instead of recruiting, but we'll let him slide this time. Woodman in the World had a coffee set up at Pine Tree. We were invited to that as well. We went out there and got to mingle with the kids and the staff, so both fun events. And I also want to give a shout out to Marbury Baptist Church Mothers' Day Out program. They invited us out there, so we had a little show and tell that you can see from the pictures. And then also, if you look in that upper left, they had quite a few goodies that they had to give us at the very end. So that lasted almost a week for our guys. And then we also had Love Longview on April first, Saturday morning, and we had a cleanup. And thank you, Beautiful Longview or Longview Beautification. And we also had, you can see there in the bottom right, Officer Easily out there with him. So that's a cleanup on our east side of town, and this is our current project three sixty-five this year for the Longview Police Department. And that was a very successful mission, and like one of the young ladies said, what she likes about Longview is how good it looks and clean and stuff like that. And then projects like this is what keeps it like that. And speaking of that, Officer Easily, he has also put together for on May sixth, it'll be from nine AM to noon. We have quite a few sponsors helping us out with this. It's going to be a program to, we'll have our child ID, but we'll also let people know everything that we have going on this summer. And if there's anything that you, if your child is going to be sitting at the house and you want them to have something to do, please come down on between nine and noon, and that'll be right there at the corner of Eastman Road with the Veteran Affairs Office in the parking lot. And we'll let you know everything that's available this summer for your children to get involved with. So definitely excited about that, and I appreciate Officer Easily putting this together. And finally, last but definitely not least, this is National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. So this is our dispatch folks, and for police and fire, I know Chief still want to have more to say about this as well. These folks, they're the lifelines for us. They're the people when you call in and call nine-one-one. They take the brunt of that phone call, and then they're the ones that are running everything down for police and fire and the back scene or backdrop. They basically, they play almost many detectives for us as they figure out things, people to call, who we need to get to the scene. They check our welfare constantly. Just couldn't make it without them, and definitely glad we get to celebrate them this week. And with that, I'm open to any questions.
Thank you, Chief Boone.
Thank you.
Chief Tillman.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor, members of council. Mr. McFeet, thank you for the opportunity to provide you this update. Some things that have happened in the fire department since our last council meeting. Back in March on the twenty-second, Chief Green and I had the opportunity to attend the Texas Fire Chiefs Annual Executive Conference. And at this conference, the Longview Fire Department was re-designated as a best-practices fire department in the state of Texas. Now, I can sit up here all day long and tell you how great the men and the women of the Longview Fire Department do every day in serving the city. But what this process does is it takes an outside panel of other fire chiefs and assistant chiefs representing other Texas fire departments that basically come in here and they look in our medicine chest to see what's going on really behind the doors of the Longview Fire Department. And they evaluate us on several criteria, from what we do in operations to how we train, to how we respond, all of those variables that are out there in motion every day to make sure that we're meeting some minimum standards in the service that we provide. So to have this designation and be one of the twenty-eight fire departments designated in the state of Texas really means a lot to us. And should our department ever in the future decide to go after the national level of accreditation, because we've completed this process, it basically gets us about two-thirds of the way there. So a lot of work behind the scenes with SOPs and policies and procedures just to make sure that we're out there doing the right thing every day. So proud of our fire department for hitting this mark and again, getting that re-designation. We had the opportunity in late March also to practice a POD exercise. So a POD is a point of distribution. So if you'll think back to the height of the pandemic when we were doing the vaccination hub out at the fairgrounds, that was really, that was an over-the-top POD exercise because we ended up vaccinating eighty-plus thousand people at that one site over about a six-month period on every weekend, every Saturday and Sunday. A lot of syringes were flying around out there. But this exercise simulated some type of a need in the community where there were medications that needed to be distributed in quick order. So it gave us the opportunity to collaborate with fire and police, Longview ISD, UT Health Nursing Program, as well as Net Health to run this exercise to see if we could hit certain marks. And some of the other things that it allowed us to do was to bring the hospital systems into play to test surge capacity, how well we could react to a mass casualty incident as far as needing to transport a lot of people to medical facilities at one time. So it was just a great undertaking by everybody that was involved, and it's just another step in ultimately being prepared for when and if that need ever arises. So proud of our staff getting to be involved with that and that collaboration and getting all those outside stakeholders. It's a big deal for our community to have that kind of want-to-participate attitude that we saw out there that day. So we're excited to have had that happen and look forward to more opportunities. Had the opportunity, and again, I've said it many times, this is one of the more fun things that I get to do as the fire chief is promoting new people into new positions and higher responsibility in the ranks of our fire department. So back on March thirtieth, I had the opportunity to promote six people into new positions, and I've got them listed there. One of the guys couldn't be there, so I had to do two pictures. But those being promoted recently were Ross Dyer, the battalion chief, Zach Porter, the fire driver engineer, Robert Collins, the fire driver engineer, Wes Teague, the lieutenant, James Cooper, the captain, and then the picture on the right was Stephen Winchell, the lieutenant. Couldn't be more proud of this group of guys for taking that next step and again, really moving the fire department forward by taking on those higher degrees of responsibility and authority in our rank structure and taking that next step and becoming a bigger part of the future of the Longview Fire Department. So congratulations to each one of them. And as we see new people come into new positions, occasionally, we're going to see guys leave out of their position. So one of those that has just retired on us earlier this week was fire driver engineer Jay Goss after twenty-eight years of service. Jay is a Halsville native. He did a great job. He spent a lot of years out at Station Five, but he retired out of Station Eight out on the north side of town, driving truck aid out there. And we're going to miss Jay. Jay was a fun guy to be around. We hope he still sticks his head in the door every once in a while to give us a hard time, but we couldn't be more happy and more proud of him for making those twenty-eight years and the service that he provided to our department. Tenure breakfast. We also had a big class in the tenure breakfast this go-around. Uh, the, the thing that amazed me the most out of this is looking across our 10 people that were recognized was they can, they collectively contributed a hundred, or equaled 150 years of service to the city of Longview, just across 10 people in the fire department. So I'll just go down the list real quick as Chief Boone did. So we had there to my, to, in the picture there going left to right, Lieutenant Steven Winchell with 10 years, firefighter medic Josh Meenick with five years, section chief Andy Parker with 25 years, battalion chief Jeff Walling with 20 years, battalion chief Michael Wiley with 25 years, driver engineer Jake Robertson with 10 years, captain Steven McCarthy with 20 years, firefighter medic David Holly with 20 years, and then not pictured, but also being recognized for firefighter medic Nick Holland with five years and Garrett Jeways, firefighter medic with 10 years. So I couldn't be more proud of these people and look forward to many more years of service out of each one of them. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief Stillman.
I, I did, I'm sorry, I did want to say I didn't get a slide in here, I'm remiss on that, but I do want to give a shout out to our public safety communications dispatcher, as Chief Boone alluded to. They don't just dispatch for the police department, they're also behind the scenes for the fire department. And we couldn't do so much of what the service that we deliver out there without them being on the other end of a very difficult phone call, high-pressure situations and kind of life or death hanging on the line. So they do a great job for us and I just want to reach out and say thank them. They, they, they really go unrecognized so much of the time and, and again, they're the ones that get it all started for both of us. So I'm sorry, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
You, you both just reiterate what we say all the time, that between police, fire and our dispatchers, we have the best public safety in all of Texas. We thank you for your service to our community. Thank you all. We're now to consent agenda. Anyone like to count, pull, uh, items off for separate discussion?
I'd like to pull off H, please.
H?
And Mayor, I'd like to pull off item C just for a comment. I don't have any questions.
Item C. Okay, we will proceed with item C first.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just wanted to make a comment on how excited I am to receive this donation. This is us approving a $25,000 donation from Longview Paws, which is a 501(c)(3) entity that supports the Longview Animal Center. Um, and Spay It Forward is a program that began in August of 2020. I've mentioned it here before. It provides free vouchers to low-income families to spay or neuter their pets. So since it began in 2020, we've received fi- no, 50,000 in donations, given out 677 vouchers and counting. I think people have been waiting at the door when they opened this week. And from those vouchers, 70% have been returned. So that means in that period of time, we have spayed or neutered 475 animals, which our director, Chris Kemperback there deserves a lot of recognition for. But he told me if I were to calculate that out with how many puppies and kitties that would have resulted in if those animals had not been spayed or neutered, it would be an astounding number. So very proud of that program, very proud of the contributions of our community to prevent those additional pets that would otherwise have to find a spot in our shelter. So that's it.
Thank you. H, Mr. Carpenter?
Uh, Dwayne?
Yes, sir.
Does that go into the new facility?
Yes, this is for the new fires, uh, for new police station.
Okay, one simple question, bond, budget or a change order?
Bond. This will be part of the bond package.
That is paid out of the bond money that the citizens brewed.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, if there's no further questions, there are motion.
So moved.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion of second on the paper?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on to zoning. Uh, we will start with the public hearing to consider proposal annexation of approximately 5.49 acres. Ms. Choi?
Thank you, Mayor Mack, Members of Council and Mr. Mcfee. Uh, this is a public hearing that is required by the Texas Local Government Code to consider a proposed annexation of approximately 5.490 acres within our city's ETJ located in Gregg County. Uh, staff has received a request from property owners to annex this property of land located in Gregg County, uh, located on Southeastman Road, south of Lucy Drive. All of these properties proposed for annexation have a portion of their property located inside the city limits of Longview. Uh, this annexation is proposing to incorporate the rest of these properties into the city. Currently, most of these properties are vacant. The applicant would like to develop a convenience store with the fueling station on the property located to the east side of Eastman Road. Uh, the properties on the west side of Eastman Road is currently mostly, uh, located inside the city limits, uh, except for their frontage. One of the properties is Bagley Tractor and Equipment and the other one is vacant. Uh, Bagley Tractor and Equipment has access to water and wastewater. Uh, the vacant tracks do not, however, they, when they are developed, the developer will bear the cost of providing services to those lots. All basic city services such as sanitation, police, fire and EMS will be provided on the date of annexation. Uh, staff would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any question, Ms. Choi? If not, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
A motion, there's a second?
Second.
A motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consider an ordinance annexing approximately 5.9 acres of land within the ETJ. Ms. Choi?
Thank you. Uh, so this request is for council to adopt an ordinance, uh, annexing the property that I just gave a presentation on.
Thank you. We'll have a motion on this?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion does carry. We have a public hearing to consider application Z 23-07. Ms. Choi?
Thank you. So this is the zoning request for the convenience store with fueling station. Um, as stated previously, um, the property was outside the city limits, however, it is now inside the city limits. Um, upon annexation, uh, the property is automatically assigned an agricultural zoning designation. Therefore, the applicant would need to rezone the property to develop this, uh, to develop this property. Um, staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with our comprehensive plan and surrounding uses. Uh, Planning and Zoning Commission along with staff recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any questions, comments? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We want to have a public hearing to consider application Z 23-08.
Thank you. Uh, the applicant is requesting to rezone approximately 5.59 acres from Single Family 4 to General Retail Zoning District in order to develop lots fronting Gilmer Road to, uh, for retail uses. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with surrounding uses, therefore it does not constitute spot zoning. Planning and Zoning Commission along with staff recommends approval of the request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. I do have two speaker cards on this issue and the, the next one on number E. Would you all like to speak now or after we go to E? Better speak now because we'll make a decision on this one first. So, uh, Amanda Harrison?
No, no Amanda Harrison? Okay, nothing to speak of? Okay. Brian Rob- Robinson?
Hey, I'll be real quick.
Sure.
If you'll go back to the exhibit with the plat, since this wasn't brought up at the P and Z meeting, I just wanted to bring it up here just as a point of record. Uh, I know this is the, the initial plat and it'll be addressed in, uh, permitting prior to moving forward or permits being issued. Uh, but if you would notice at the bottom of the development, the access point is on my lot. And so I know that'll be addressed in, in permitting, but I wanted to bring it up here just as a point of record because it was not brought up in P and Z.
Okay. Ms. Choi, you, you, you're aware with this now?
Yes, sir. This, so this is just a zoning exhibit and so, uh, the gentleman is correct. Through the permitting process, that point will be brought up.
Gotcha. That'll have to go through him before they can proceed forward.
Yes, sir.
Very good. Any other questions or comments on this public hearing? If not, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay, I just close the public hearing. We'll open them back up.
Sorry, thank you. Uh, is Mr. Whalen here? You want to come up?
Thank you so much for being here today and also for getting with me, uh, about this. I just wanted to ask a couple of questions and, uh, one of them is, I wanted to ask what your vision is for this development. Um, what do you plan to, what are your contingencies and plans for the oil equipment? And what kind of businesses do you hope to attract to lease out this building?
Okay, so first, we've, we've done, our team's done a lot of work, um, so far. We've still got some to do to clean up the area. If you've been around that area, you, you've seen piles of debris and we've been working with youth organizations to get the material and equipment to them if they can use it because it's no longer in use for them. So that's the first thing. It's got some more cleanup to do, but as far as the oil wells, we've been in communication with the oil company. We have a verbal agreement with them, um, that we will pursue if we're successful here tonight. But at this point, we can't really, um, pursue that until we know this passes through this committee. And at that point, we'll address that. But we do have a verbal commitment on a cost and, uh, they're in agreement to, uh, cap those and take them out of service and remove all the equipment for a, for a specified fee.
Okay, perfect. Um, those are all, that's it.
That's it.
That's it?
Okay.
Okay. Then now, any other questions? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll go to public, to number E. Public hearing, consider application Z 23-09. Ms. Choi?
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezone, uh, the back portion of this property, that's 5.59 acres, from Single Family 4, um, to Single Family 6 Zoning District to develop a single-family subdivision. Uh, staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with adjacent uses, therefore it does not constitute spot zoning. Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any questions, Ms. Choi? Mr. Carpenter?
Ms. Choi, how many lots?
Um, so on their exhibit, they show 41 lots.
Okay, and it has two accesses?
Um, based on the exhibit, yes, sir. It does.
Now, is the south access a city or private?
Uh, that is a private road, um, and it's an access easement. Um, and like I said, this is an exhibit, so it has not gone to staff for review. Um, and through the pre-submission proposal process, staff will look and evaluate all these things.
So, and this might be a Michael question. What happens if they can't come to successful?
So if they can't have-
What is our, our current standard is 30?
That is correct. Yes, sir. Yes.
Okay. So if he's coming to 40, what?
41.
41.
Yes, sir.
So at some point, he could be forced to go back to 30?
Yes, sir.
If he cannot satisfy the access south and west?
That is correct.
Is that south and west and south and east? What does that road do on the south?
On the south, it goes, um, all the way to the east and dead ends on a piece of property that Mr. Castleberry used to own.
Okay. So the major access back to 300 is?
Yes, sir, to the west.
But that would be caught in the plat submission. When does that?
So they first go through the zoning, uh, stage and then once zoning is approved, then they would go through the plating process. And so that's when staff would look at the subdivision and ensure that it meets all the requirements.
So there's nothing that we need to do to ensure if we get, if we grant the rezon and they get to that roadblock, let's say, it does not have to come back to us, correct?
That is correct.
And the staff would catch it and would not let the other 11 lots go forward without the-
That is correct.
The two accesses, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Campbell?
Um, what would be the difference if it were to stay SF4 in that lot? How many units would they be able to build?
I'm not sure how many units they would, um, be able to fit, but SF4 allows for a 7,500 square foot lot, uh, lot size. So it would, um, so they would have to go less. Um, so 7,500 square foot, uh, 60 foot wide, 100 foot deep.
I just wanted to speak a little to this. I've been, um, doing my research in regards to this, but I've gotten a lot of calls from my constituents, um, that are not very happy with, uh, E. So once you get to the next section.
Okay, that, that, that is E. We're on E.
Oh, yes, but once you close it.
Okay, well, the public hearing is, no, any other questions?
You have one, Ray. What size of the-
You have to come-
Come to the microphone.
The size home for SF, uh, SF6?
It's 4,000.
I'm sorry.
4,000 square feet by 1,000.
You have lot.
The lot size is 4,000 square foot.
But it could be smaller than that. Yeah.
The, these are, this is just a, this is just a diagram. It's not a plat. It's not a, this is just a drawing. Because we're not committing to any size of building tonight.
Yes. But however, the minimum in SF6?
I read it.
So the minimum, so the minimum house size is 1,000 square foot, but that's, but that's just a minimum. So the developer could go, could far exceed that. They just can't go below that.
Okay. Okay. Now the public hearing is now closed. Do we have a motion?
Move to deny.
Is there a second to the deny? Motion fails for a second. Is there a motion to approve? There is no motion to approve, so the motion-
Well, can I take, ask one more question?
I would like to, I would like for you to ask a question.
Okay, will you come up here, Mr. Whalen? Okay.
I'm, I'm new at this, so I probably should have raised my hand earlier, so I apologize.
It's okay, I'm new too, so we're working together.
Okay.
Okay. One concern from various people that have called is just that the lots are going to be extremely close together. Um, you know, like extremely close together, uh, within the neighborhood. So I would just maybe rather than 41, like to see slightly less than that, like 35, closer to the 30 range. Um, just from the various calls I've received, if anyone in the audience that does live in District 5, you know, would like to come up and talk-
I'm sorry, our public hearing is closed.
Yes, sir, sorry.
There's no more discussion. We really shouldn't be having this discussion right now, but Mr. Ray, will you allow this?
Uh, you, you can have discussion outside the public hearing at, at the pleasure of the council.
Okay. We'll allow this to continue. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Um, yeah, I just kind of, going back to that original question I had earlier, seeing kind of what your vision is for this community. I know you talked about it with me before, but I kind of want everybody to hear what, what your vision for this community development would be. I'm worried about the ingress and egresses as well, just because I live in Spring Hill and, um, it's already really congested as it is. I know we'll get further into that with development services, but I'm just trying to think further ahead and, um, you know, once something is zoned and once something is built, it'll take numerous years into the future to change it. So I just want to make sure that I'm being development friendly, but also keeping in mind what my neighbors and constituents would like.
Okay, so I guess the first point, whether this is an SF4 or SF6, we, if we go forward with this, we're going to build the same house. So the only difference for us would be that there's going to be a little bit wider yard. The depth of the lots are pretty much set because of the spacing and how we would do the street. If we need to go down in a number of houses because of issues that we find in the design process, we will go down less than 41. We're probably already at that point because of the issue that was brought up on the south end of the property. There's probably going to be less homes than what we have in that plot just because of the, uh, our mistake that we made in the, in the initial diagram because we haven't done the design work. So we're going to put four-bedroom and three-bedroom houses here. They're going to be between 14 and 1600 square feet. So they're going to be real similar to what, uh, we're seeing a lot around the community. So the difference that we're talking about in number is one thing, but the, the size of the houses are going to remain the same regardless of whether we're successful in rezoning it, um, here tonight. That's the, that's the kind of what we're planning on doing, so.
Okay, thank you so much.
Any other questions?
Ms. Harrison, would you like to speak now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, she had a speaker card filled out, so I'll allow that to proceed because she already has a speaker card filled out.
I just wanted to wait till the end. Uh, my name's Amanda Castleberry Harrison. Um, some of you guys know me, some of y'all don't. Um, I have several different reasons for talking on this subject. Um, obviously Castleberry is my heritage. Uh, my family has had this land for over 100 years. Um, it's very important to us. And not only that, I was raised in El Myra Chapel. So, um, I've been fortunate enough to be able to be the listing agent on this property. Um, I've also, I'm also working with the buyers on the property. Um, I want you guys to know that we have had a lot of meetings. We've met with the school board. We've met with all of them personally. Um, they're all really happy about this improvement. They worked really well with us as far as tearing down some of those buildings that have needed to go for years. Um, so I hope that if you've driven by, you've noticed that it looks a lot more, it looks more beautiful than it ever has in a long time. Um, I also have a background in oil and gas and so I reached out personally to Senron, the company. We've held meetings with them. Like the guys stated, we have come to agreement with them. They know that they need to be plugged. They know that it's, it's time for them to be done. So we are, we've done a lot of work. We've put a lot of energy to this. We've put a lot of footwork in with the neighbors, with the church, again. So we've really done our due diligence as far as trying to make everybody really happy, really pleased. And I do want to mention that almost everything that's been torn down off that property, I was able to donate to Dixie Youth Baseball and lots of other small organizations. We gave a church all of the bleachers and the fences. So we didn't just throw everything away. We really wanted everything to go to someone to be able to be used. So that's, that's really my piece, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those for you guys.
Any question, Ms. Harrison? Okay. If not, then anyone have more discussion? This discussion is complete. So there was no motion to approve. There was a motion to deny, but no second. So unless there is a motion, this will-
Can I take my motion back and approve?
You may.
Okay.
Are you making a motion to approve?
I would like to make a motion to approve. Thank you for all the extra feedback. I really appreciate it.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Public hearing, considered application is Z twenty-three dash ten. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezone approximately six point two three acres located at the corner of Greg Tech's Road and Gilmer Road from agricultural to townhome zoning district. The applicant, the applicant would like to develop a townhome subdivision on this property. Staff finds the proposed zoning change is consistent with our future land use map, therefore it does not constitute spot zoning. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing which is now open. Any questions of Ms. Choi? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
If motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing, considered application is Z twenty-three dash thirteen. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezone approximately eight point six seven eight acres located on the east side of MLK Boulevard, north of Young Street, from a single-family three and two-family three to light industrial zoning district. The applicant would like to rezone this property to allow for the future expansion of Aon Coil. Staff finds the proposed zoning change is consistent with adjacent uses, therefore it does not constitute spot zoning. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing which is now open. Any question of Ms. Choi? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move for approval. To approve.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing, held, considered application is Z twenty-three dash fourteen. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant would like to rezone three lots located at the corner of North Seventh Street and Laurel Street from multifamily two to single-family five zoning district. The applicant would like to develop three single-family homes on this lot. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with our future land use map. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing which is now open. Any questions of Ms. Choi? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Choi. Have a public hearing to consider ordinance, something along with MPO Loop twenty-one corridor study. Mr. McBride, how are you, sir?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. Thank you for having me today. My name is Brian McBride. I serve as the Director of the Longview Metropolitan Planning Organization. Let me get this real quick. So a little backstory on the East Loop two eighty-one corridor study and the MPO. The MPO primarily does transportation planning within our boundary, and so you'll see a lot of our transportation plans, specifically the walk and bike plan that we've done. That's the more recent one. And so we use these studies to basically come up with solutions within our area for long-range planning efforts as well as some short-term efforts. So the study team for this project was the Longview MPO, where we're the sponsor agency, City of Longview staff, that's officials as well as other staff members, tech staff from both the Tyler and Atlanta District, and the consultants team, Freeze Nichols and their subconsultants that collected traffic data for us. So study goals, these kind of align with our long-range plan, and so it's improving traffic mobility, improving safety, coordinating access, and accommodating for future growth. Growth in the area is very important, and we need to sustain that growth in a sense for transportation needs, because we don't want congested areas. So the corridor, we took a study, took about a year, so we started last March, and we concluded this past February where this plan was actually approved by the Longview MPO Policy Board. And so the first month, they collected our data, what we had in-house for our GIS data, and they see what were we lacking. Primarily, it was the most recent traffic counts for the area, and so they had to do a lot of analysis for that. We went to the public and said, hey, we're going to do this corridor study. What's your issues? And so they were able to do charades. They were telling us, you know, exactly what was going on, you know, what, what were they experiencing in that area? And through that public outreach, we sent out notifications for our landowners that were adjacent to that area to kind of help boost the attendance at that meeting. In May and July, we took all that feedback, gave it back to the consultant to kind of analyze, process, and give the actual, basically the conceptual idea of, you know, what we took, we heard, now let's try to massage it, is what they like to use, to kind of predict and give us solutions for that area. In September, they came back to the public, and we presented to the public the solutions of the improvements, both short-term and long-term. And just to kind of reiterate, these improvements are conceptual design in the sense of, we're trying to improve safety and mobility, but it's not set in stone. It's a planning document, it serves as a guide, but it's not set in stone in the sense of making decisions today. It's supposed to be making sense, or making decisions for projects that are happening in twenty-five years. So with that being said, we went to the stakeholders, county officials, city staff, as, as well as the state, and we presented the ideas to them, and we also presented it to the public. They were there, could provide their own feedback regarding the improvements, and kind of just give their little bit, their two cents on it to kind of help maybe say it a little bit differently. In October and February, like I said, it was brought to my policy board and, or our policy board, and was adopted. The corridor overview, and so it's from, it's the East Loop two eighty-one corridor, starting from Tryon Road all the way to Page Road. And so this is the overview of the corridor that we've studied. As you can see, it's got a great separations, intersections that are at grade, and average annual daily count of about twenty-four thousand to twenty-eight thousand. We also took in the crash data, and so a lot of our decision-making is regarding to safety, and so crash data is one of the things that we look at the most. And so over a five-year term, you can see that there was, were much higher than what the state crash rate was for our area. So this was an obvious answer for us to look at this area and say, we need, we need to think about doing something here. And so you can see at Hollybrook Drive, Alpine Road, as well as Page and Delia, these were the top intersections that were of concern to the public. Through the public comments, or the public outreach process, we provided an online option just because we know that it's difficult for individuals to be able to meet the meeting and just be able to provide their own feedback. And so we provided an online survey as well as an in-person survey, just because we understand that technology is not everyone's friend, and so we want to be able to provide that to our constituents. A couple of items that I will point out, I won't read all the percentages, but you can see Page and Delia Drive were sixty-one percent, and that's a lot of people that were concerned about that intersection. Houswell was building their new school at that time. You've got the apartments right across the street from that. You've got, you've seen a lot of development occurring over there, or we know a future development that's coming. And then the other thing is, why does this area concern you? Obvious, safety. People are turning movements. They're also worried about the traffic flow efficiency, making sure with the new school opening, as well as as development occurs, you know, more traffic going to that area. Some of the public comic, comment, sorry, feedback that we were looking at is they were wanting a reconstructing of intersections, and so you'll see some of the solutions that were provided, that I'm providing y'all today to kind of help combat that, as well as a traffic signal improvements. They were concerned about specifically Alpine's Bridge, you know, people trying to take a left, should go south when they're, you know, getting onto the access ramp closer to McCoy's. And so you can kind of see that, you know, there was a variety of different reasonings why we, they wanted us to address this. So like I said, we're a twenty-five-year plan, and so this was an analysis from our travel demand model that predicts, you know, traffic patterns from twenty-five years from now. And so you can kind of see that without any sort of improvements there, you can see exactly what the level of service from the turning movements is what's being projected. So you can see a lot of Fs on there, and like I was told when I was growing up, Fs are bad. And so we need to fix something. We need to do something. And this is exactly why I'm here today. Some recommended improvements, there's also additional slides here that show verbatim what we're proposing, but we're on highlight view, auxiliary lanes, intersection layout modifications, median opening management, because we were proposing that we close some of the medians just because they're unnecessary, as well as a signal at FM twenty-two oh eight, which is Alpine Road for us, and speed management and safety improvements, and access management and connectivity. This is important because, I mean, the more driveways you have on a thoroughfare like the Loop two eighty-one, I mean, the more congested it gets, the more potential for accidents, and so we're concentrating our efforts on making sure that we kind of be smart with our decision-making on when we give access to the property. And so we're trying to make sure the placement of it, where it lines up with a median or an adjacent driveway, we're ensure that we're doing our part to make sure that we're keeping everyone safe. So here's three different maps. Here's the first map. Here's the intersection of, you can see Tryon Road just before FM twenty-two oh eight. Major point here is the median improvements, suggesting that we'll eventually close where it's only a left turn versus left and right, and so just kind of, or I guess left and right, you know, one's going, one's going north, one's going south. And so for this, it's just, it's a recommendation in the near future. It's not today. Obviously, a lot of these improvements cost money, and so part of that, and in the sense of it costs money, and this identifies it, helps us leverage for grants, helps us leverage for state money, so tech staff, since it's a tech staff thoroughfare, it's an on-system projects, or all of them are on-system improvements. So it's basically, we're handing it at a state level. Next, I'll go over Alpine. So the big one here is the signal. I think I've talked to some council members, and the signal is definitely, we've had a discussion right before, it's, it's, it's a need, it's a want, it's a desire. It's a short-term improvement that we're suggesting. We did, our consultants did a brief warrant study, so not the official nine-step warrant study, and it, it barely, it's, if it was informal, it barely met it, so basically saying a couple of years from now, more than likely, we're going to need to find a way to fund that signal through our project planning. And next, we'll have the third map, which is Pillion Delia and Page Road. Excuse my voice. And for this project, you can kind of see there's a re-alignment that was proposed. Thank you for council and the city to do a private partnership. So that was, you know, our, our identified need, and it basically brought it to life within our study to say, hey, no, look, there's truly a need there. And so it's, we're through the development process of working with the state for other additional highway safety funds to say, hey, look, we identified it within a plan. How can we leverage funding from our category funding to help basically get this to happen in the near future? Lastly, this is the more planning-esque map, so I want to preface with saying, this is not set in stone, so if you own property, this is not trying to be saying that we're going to put a road through your property. That's not the intent of this. This is a conceptual roadway network in the sense of, we're trying to provide a different way of getting to where you want to go through a different mode of, not transportation, yes, but different roadway network, so different travel pattern. And so this was kind of brought up in the sense of, it's more of conceptual. Obviously, we would have to work with residential development, as well as any of the development within the county. It's, it's a big picture, because I mean, the, the city limits border is close to where I just, just northeast of that Loop two eighty-one. And so, I mean, it's, it's a concert effort between working with the county, working with the city, and working with the state. And so that's kind of the conceptual layout that is being proposed. That's all I have, and floors y'all to ask me any questions.
You know, I'm, I'm the chairperson of the MPO board, and it's, it's quite a process to get to this point. Brian has done a great job. It doesn't just happen. There's a lot, a lot of work that goes into this. So thanks for your efforts, Brian, and all the, the team that, that works to get this where we are, because like I said, it's, it's a, it's a look into the future, and, you know, it's kind of a playing with a crystal ball, but you did a great job. So any questions, Mr. McBride? If not, is there, this requires a public hearing which is now open. Any questions? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Is there a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
We're now at eyes of community interest. Mr. Carpenter.
Thank you, Mayor. Pine Tree Celebrations, a couple of things going on I want to make sure you're aware of. The Area Seven Special Olympics will be in town for the Spring Games this Friday on April the fourteenth and fifteenth at Pirate Stadium. Five-thirty Friday night for cycling. There'll be track and field events on Saturday. Opening ceremonies on Saturday begin at nine, events conclude at noon. Pine Tree announced this year their Teachers of the Year, Jane Craig, Javier Sosita, Jennifer Ingram, Amy Streepman, Amanda Dawson, Mark Thomas, and Jody Stark, and Jennifer Ingram as District Elementary Teacher of the Year, and Amanda Dawson as District Secondary Teacher of the Year. Congratulations to all of those fine people. One thing that I thought was most interesting, and I wanted to start sharing, I had the opportunity a few weeks back to speak to one of the service groups here in town, and had Sean tell me, or I asked Sean and, and Richard if they could get me some, some information, and folks, you would not believe the millions and billions and millions and millions of gallons of water we use, and the water that we treat, and the water that we get rid of. It's a number that's, that's off the charts, and just thanks to all of those people involved on that side of it. It's a piece that, that we see on paper, but we don't ever get to see it in, in, in real life, and it was a shocking number. The second most shocking number is that our fire department chief started over eleven thousand IVs in the field last year. Thought that was a unique number. Go ahead. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Snoddy.
Nothing to that, ma'am.
Mr. Wade.
Have a few things, Mayor Mattner. Number one, I'd like to congratulate the Foster Middle School Band for receiving First Division Award at their recent URL concert. Great job to those Longview Lobo musicians. And speaking of Foster Middle School, they will be hosting a Longview ISD Career Fest on April twenty-second from eight AM to twelve PM. And last, I just want to give a shout-out and good luck to the many Leeternal University athletes competing this weekend and next week. I invite everyone to check out Leeternal's athletics page to see those events, dates for softball, baseball, tennis, and track and field, and it's some high-level collegiate sport played right here in Longview. And get out and show them some more support. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Shahara? Ms. Cambo.
I just wanted to give a shout-out and encourage everyone to get your tickets to the Rangerettes Open. It is this weekend. It was magical and beautiful, so please get your tickets and support our world-famous Killer College Rangerettes. And rodeo is next weekend, so please mark your calendars for April twenty-first through twenty-second, and we hope to see you all at the rodeo.
Mr. Pirtle?
Nothing for me.
Mr. McPhee?
I actually do have something this evening.
Nope, sorry. I just do that for courtesy, never mind.
Sorry.
I'll take it back. On April eleventh, we, we recognized our employees that have had, celebrated various milestones throughout their service with the city, and, uh, you've heard about the police department and the fire department's employees, and I just want to recognize off from five years from left to right, we had Riley Scott, Brian McBride, Jeffrey Mathis, Christian Pippens, Tavius Cox, Rogers Pegues, and with ten years of service, we had Garnell Henderson and Gary Johnson, and with fifteen years of service, we have Angela Choi. With twenty years of service, we had Bonnie Hubbard. And with twenty-five years of service, we had Terry Russell. So I wanted to take the time to thank everyone for their service, and we're certainly excited that we can retain and, and recruit talent such as this here.
Besides the best public safety, we have the best city staff as well. We're lucky and blessed in Longview, Texas. Well, the Free Community Chautauqua Festival returns this Saturday, April fifteenth at Longview Public Library. Join us for a fun time celebrating the rich, diverse culture of the Longview and East Texas has to offer. For more information, visit longviewtexas.gov slash Chautauqua. Eight years it took me to get that. Eight years. I don't have to look at it anymore. Got it. Well, Downtown Live got rained out last week, so Downtown Live will officially start this